Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, March 28th at 6:30 PM. The opening prayer will be given by Pastor Steven Pfeifer of the First Methodist Church. Please rise.
I'm gonna ask you all to sit. I did a little research before I came about the latest Supreme Court case covering prayers in these kind of situations. You'll find that on your table, and I just thought you might like to look at that at your leisure. I would like to help you create a proper deliberative mood for your meeting by leading a short guided meditation in lieu of a more traditional prayer. And I have an egg timer here that's a three-minute timer. I've timed this twice today. It's less than three minutes. Will you grant me three minutes to do this meditative guided meditation?
I'll give you an exception this time.
Thank you. I invite you to give your imagination's free rein in this exercise, so you may wish to close your eyes and take a deep breath or two. Please bring to mind a hero or mentor of yours, someone whom you respect for their wisdom and any other qualities that you believe are central to what it means to be a human being in the fullest sense. This person may be someone who is alive today, or someone who has ever lived at any time in the past, or it may be an imaginary figure from literature, or a character that you have fashioned from your own creativity. The main point is just to summon someone who comes to mind, who you feel comfortable to ask to be with you, and honored that they would agree to be with you. Now, please imagine the place where you have agreed to meet with this person. It could be a comfortable coffee shop that you know about, a beautiful spot in nature, an imaginary location from history or literature, or some locale that you find particularly meaningful from your own life, even if it is being across the table in this very chamber. Your hero or mentor is with you now, and you with them, face to face in the location you have chosen. You may want to spend time with this person just for the pleasure of being with them, or you may want to ask them a question, or seek their advice, or just hear what they may wish to say to you. Take a moment to settle on your reason for summoning them, if there is one, as they patiently and kindly wait before you. You want to speak to this person, so collect your thoughts and prepare to say whatever is on your mind. But before you actually start to speak, imagine that this person who is across from you with a kind expression on their face reaches their arm up gently, and with a couple of their fingers touches you lightly on your forehead. Feel that slight pressure of their touch on the skin of your face. What are your immediate thoughts and emotions? How do you react? What are you feeling? Take a moment to consider what has happened to you as this imaginary scene fades. And when you are ready, open your eyes gently and return to this chamber in the Wallingford Town Hall, and prepare yourself to do the work of tonight's meeting. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'm gonna ask you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Maroon?
Here.
Chertel?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Thank you. Testa?
Here.
Zandry? Chairman Savoni?
Here. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Onto item four, the items removed from the consent agenda. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, from the consent agenda of which I am aware. Onto item five.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 1-225F and Section 1-206B to discuss the matter of Taniki and Judkins at all.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going to executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. The council will retreat to the council office, so there is no need to clear the chambers.
Mr. Chairman, I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We declare the council out of executive session. Onto item six, is there a motion on item six?
Mr. Chairman, I move to the consent of the insurance company's settlement of Taniki versus Judkins in accordance with the policy as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chertel?
No.
Sullivan?
It fries my bacon, but I'll say yes.
Okay. Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item seven, the public question and answer period. Mr. Chardullo?
Paul Chardullo, Two Bayberry Drive. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind everybody that residents in Wallingford, all residents in Wallingford, depend very heavily on the town council to ensure that we have checks and balances in place in order to prevent government overreach. And as the chairman, obviously, you carry a particularly heavy burden because you lead the council and...
I run the meetings.
You run the meetings.
That's about it.
But you determine, you know, what is on the agenda, et cetera. And, you know, you are the leader, they follow you, as they should. Now, having said that, I have to say that it's not clear to me that that particular responsibility is being met by this council. And I came to that conclusion after taking a hard look at the recent audit for the last fiscal year. What it showed is that the town actually ended the year, you have to dig a little bit to find it, but the town actually ended the year with a $7 million surplus. It's about $3 million plus on the revenue side, $3 million plus on the expense side. And I went back and I took a look at the previous year, and it was pretty much the same thing. It was close to that number. And I went back another year, and it was similar to years ago. So I think it's fair to say that that's a trend. And I'm not sure why, I'm not here to try to diagnose that, but I came across something that I think may help the council in intensifying its scrutiny of the budget. And I think it has to be done at a macro level. And what I found is that every year, when the budget is brought forth, the administration, according to the charter, is obligated to provide the previous full year's worth of performance, which it does, the current year with respect to months that are in the books, and an estimate or a forecast, the best efforts forecast for the current year, and then the proposal for the next year. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe that's being done, you're not getting a current forecast. If you look at the numbers, if you go back four or five years, what you see is that instead of providing a forecast, we're simply given the budget numbers for the current year. And we obviously know that they're incorrect by a big, big amount. So I think that needs to be addressed by the council, and I would like to ask that you put that issue on the agenda for a discussion and possible action.
You've already done that via email, and I've replied to your email.
Yes.
You did get my response to your email.
Refresh my memory, what did it say?
It said that I am considering your request.
Okay. I think the timing is very critical because we're about to go into a new budget. So I'd like to ask that you put it on the next meeting that we have here.
I got your email...
Yes, conversation.
I got your email yesterday, and I believe I replied to it yesterday.
Okay. So, all right, we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tatta?
Christina Tatta, 751 North Farms Road. Just in light of the upcoming budget season, I just wanted to make a couple of general comments. I don't believe you've received the budget from the mayor yet, but I know that in the past, the mayor's budget is usually fairly conservative, and, you know, probably isn't a lot of extras in there, at least usually not typically. But in light of this year and what's going on at the state, and us potentially taking a $10 million hit or more, which has yet to be determined, I think that we need to be especially careful. And what I would propose, and I know this may seem oversimplified, but it makes sense to me, so I just hope that you would consider it, is whatever the mayor presents, if maybe we look at a percentage to take off of that, that would be shared equally among every department that's in the budget. So then, obviously, the higher, let's say we're gonna use 5%, whatever, you know, number we think would work. The Board of Ed obviously has a huge budget. Money-wise, it's a lot more for them to have to find to cut an extra 5%. And then the smaller departments, you know, money-wise, it's a much lower amount of money, but it's still the same percentage. So I think if you look at your household budgets, like 5%, 3%, anybody can kind of find that intimate. And then instead of the councilors having to go through and say, well, you're not going to get this, but we are gonna give you this, maybe it leaves it more up to the department heads, and they can kind of tell you where they think they can cut a small percentage out. Maybe they want to divide that percentage amongst every line item, or maybe they just have one project where they can say, well, we can let this go until next year. So again, it may seem oversimplified, but I just thought maybe something to look at this year because we don't know what's going on at the state, and hopefully we won't get a big hit, but I don't think we'll know until after you need to approve the budget this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, Wallstall. And the charter revision, this is to the council and to the mayor, in the Charter Revision Commission, they had the opportunity to increase the PUC from three members to five members or more. And one of the reasons was given was that the council and the mayor has some oversight of the PUC and on the budget aspect of it. Do you have the opportunity to make suggestions to the electric water division on things that you would like to see done? Do you do that?
I review the budgets with water sewer and electric.
I don't care about the budgets, I'm talking about initiatives, things to possibly enhance or make things different, or bring things forward in the community.
Well, there's always an opportunity to talk with them about such matters.
Do you do that?
When it's appropriate, yes.
Can the council do that?
Certainly the council can advance ideas.
And let me just bring up solar. In the previous times, lend leases still, I don't know how far along they are, maybe the town attorney can tell us, but this is something that you really need to take a look at because if you take a look at how our bills are done, two big functions of it are capacity costs and transmission costs, to the tune of approximately $26 million a year. These are approximations, you know, it's not 26 million even, but that's what it costs. That's just to bring power into town. That's not what the actual cost of the fuel or what the electricity is. But if you can bring in fuel or electricity after the meter, means generated here, solar, every percentage you bring that down from your capacity cost, which is your peak times, would reduce that amount conversely. So if you can reduce it 10%, instead of paying $13 million for capacity cost, it could be approximately, these are all approximate numbers, 10% less. And I don't think that everybody's looking at the whole picture here on what solar really could do to bring down costs in Wallingford, because we have a small number of customers. We're not like UI who has hundreds of thousands of customers, and they're in the whole New England grid now. We have 20-something thousand customers. So small numbers can impact our bills, and you can see a difference. If you have one megawatt produced in solar for UI, it doesn't, it's a blip. But one megawatt for us can really do some numbers. And I just wonder if the mayor or the council will bring any of this forward to the PUC, since you do have an opportunity to take a look at their budget and to make some of these suggestions, to have them do and look at the numbers and do it out for you to see what the real cost savings are, as the last speaker just spoke. If there's a potential of the state, and who knows what the budget's gonna be yet, and who knows what the town's gonna get, but we could be getting less dollars. Well, any way that the town can save consumers money would be worthwhile, plus you have the added advantage of being green. So would you entertain at least asking the PUC to take a look at these or do these numbers up?
I'm actually doing some of my own research, and once that's done, I'm gonna have conversations with PUC members.
All right, just you? I mean, I would hope that it would just be, you know, the council is, but it would be great to initiate anything, because this is something that really, and before you do them, I mean, Attorney Farrell might be able to tell you how far along lend lease is, because you're sitting on a 50-acre lot over there that you can produce over a megawatt of power. So I would hope that the town, you know, asking to at least go in partners with them, but, so hopefully, how long do you think this might take? Do you know?
I don't, Mayor, do you know where we are with the lend lease project?
It's still being negotiated, there are aspects with, they were all features of it. One thing that has to be kept in mind, the solar, solar energy and a number of the green energy approaches are heavily subsidized by government, if not by your own electric bills. So you have to keep that in mind when you look at what you're saving, because it's generally the most expensive power there is, and where does the money come from? It's coming from the electric bills that everyone pays. So all of the conservation load management money comes from what is collected through your own electric bills. So you really have to be careful to see what the honest, quote, "savings," unquote, are.
It's, you know, the mayor is right, it's heavily subsidized, but it is. And you have to do the numbers based on those subsidies that you're gonna be getting, and that's just the way it is. But the cost of decommissioning something of that nature, Mayor, is much less than a nuclear plant that some of these, you know, they looked at numbers. We don't have, it's a green system, it keeps the economy clean, and it will present some jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public question and answer period? I see no hands, so I will close the public question and answer period and move on to item eight, where I would like to begin with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reject the Water Unit Interest Arbitration Award Case Number 2016MBA252 for the reasons set forth in the letter dated March 27th, 2017, regarding summary of reasons to reject the Water Unit Arbitration Award Case Number 2016MBA252, as signed by Attorney Dennis Chiccolaro.
Moved and seconded, if we could have some discussion on the motion, this is, this is one particular issue that we want to take up. My understanding is we're gonna leave the balance of the arbitration award alone, and we have one issue that is outlined in this particular letter that we would like to appeal to another arbitration panel, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, all of the other elements in this case can be implemented with the agreement of everyone, and certainly the town is willing, all of the other elements in the, in the contract negotiation can be implemented. It's just the one issue with regard to the actual material we have in front of you, a policy, if perhaps Dennis and...
Yes, yes, Dennis Chiccolaro.
Thank you.
To answer your question, the only issue that can be reviewed and re-awarded, so to speak, by a second panel is the single issue of what we refer to as an equipment weight safety policy. So it's, it is a single issue, it was really a single-issue arbitration, it would be a single-issue second-panel arbitration.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council? There being none, questions from the town?
Mr. Chair, just so I can, I'll just summarize by saying, the issue involves what we regard as a significant safety issue, looking to keep employees safe so that when there's manufacturer limits on use of ladders or lifts, that we are well aware of what weight, the weight of a person plus tools will not exceed that weight. And the policy seeks to do that. It's fair for everyone, and it really looks to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, Mayor, I think that was helpful to clarify for the benefit of the public. I saw no questions from the public, so Madam Clerk, if we please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item nine, report from Connecticut Department of Transportation regarding construction on Center Street, the Route 150 bridge over Wharton Brook. Gentlemen, if you would come forward, I am gonna ask you to introduce yourselves to the record, but before you do that, I want to thank you for your patience in waiting for us to get to you tonight. I'm grateful that you're here. We have, I have questions, there's nearby residents of a few condo complexes, and there's also been some questions from people who travel the route regularly. Were you able to get your equipment up and running?
Yes.
Okay. And before you do that, if you could just introduce yourselves to the record.
My name is Anil Sagala, I'm a project engineer with DOT.
Mr. Sagala, thank you.
And I'm Dan Staffka, the supervising engineer from DOT.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming, and thank you again for your patience. If you would like to proceed, please do.
Good evening. We're here for the, to do a presentation for the bridge replacement on Center Street over Wharton Brook. And we'll try to get this on the screen.
If you, when you're speaking, if you could just be conscious of your voice going into the microphone, it helps with the video recording we're making.
Definitely.
Thank you.
The light goes on, it usually takes a second for the lamp to go on. I think it's coming up.
Yeah, I see light.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Takes a while for the lamp to come on.
There we are.
Tom, if you could, terrific.
So like I said, this is a replacement of Bridge 1379, Center Street over Wharton Brook. Wharton Brook, the picture of the existing bridge is what you see. These are the people involved from the Department of Transportation, Dan Staffka who's here, Anil is me, and then we have people on the project called Raza and Mohammed. Contractor on the project is CJ Fucci. The project's about $4 million. We started this project on April 1st of this year, last year, and it goes on, it's scheduled to, for completion in November of 2018. Out of the $4 million, I would add on to that is we've paid out about a million dollars, which is about 25% of the funds, and we've used up about 33% of the time. The purpose or need for the bridge is, as you can see, this is what it looks like. It was constructed back in 1914, definitely exceeded its useful life, and as a result, it was recommended for replacement. Structurally deficient. So for us to be able to start on the project, this is the maintenance and protection of traffic, it's the basics of not letting the contract work interfere with the morning traffic between 7:00 and 9:00, and in the afternoon rush hour traffic from 3:00 to 6:00. Environmental permit, a relatively simple one, was required for the work-in-water restriction from October to May. Difficulties encountered, the usual difficulties that you encounter when there's a lot of utilities going through Center Street, and all of the existing utility infrastructure on the bridge needed to be replaced. And all of the existing utility infrastructure on the bridge needed to be replaced, it had to be relocated before the actual construction of this bridge could start. So the first thing what happened on this project was the relocation of overhead utilities. That included relocation of poles, the overhead wires. And that will continue to take place through the stages, different stage, stages on the Working in water, handling contaminated soil and water on the, on the project. And there's a waste stockpile area by ninety-one on exit fourteen off ramp northbound where this contaminated soil goes and gets disposed off, I believe in a disposal facility in So we're going to call this a stage one construction, even though pre-stage one construction would be like I talked about relocation of all the overhead utilities. This one will include removing the existing north wing walls, which we'll show you a little picture of plan sheet on. And north parapet means the barrier on the deck. Construction of the north wing walls, and we'll show you what the wing walls are in the, in the next picture. Install new water mains between the wing walls. Just to add on to this, um, before this lot of water main work, uh, which is still being done, almost to the verge of being completed, sewer work had to be done. Eight sanitary sewer manholes were installed, sanitary sewer pipes were replaced, existing water mains were also replaced. And I believe some of the existing water mains that we removed, uh, boy, I, I would want to say from what I heard was from about eighty to a hundred years old. So we, we had some difficulties at certain locations because they were pressed down and compressed and, uh, usual minor delays to, to get the right material because we didn't anticipate that this is the condition we're going to find them in. And, uh, we moved on. This sanitary sewer work, water work, I'd like to also add that that was given to us by the Town Water and Sewer Division, which we incorporated that into our plans, the bridge construction plans. So this work, along with the utility relocations, has to happen before the real bridge construction can start, which is about to start in the next couple of weeks.
So this is the current stage we're in right now. Um, you know, everybody sees the traffic's been pushed over to the south side of the project and the barrier is up.
Yeah, so it's, on the north side, you see the, the dark lines, uh, what they show is a cofferdam. Just another way of saying that we, basically it's an, we create sort of the walls so we don't disturb the, the, the existing flow of the river. Then we work within the limits of those cofferdam to construct our wing walls, the removals and the construction. Happens after we install the cofferdam too, so we don't interfere with the existing water flow or the contamination. Stage two is essentially the flip side of stage one. Uh, once we build the first half of the bridge, uh, we flip the traffic onto the new half and then to the other half. Steel beams are part of the super, superstructure along with the new deck. And what we do is after that, we'll do a temporary overlay and transition the approach So like I said, it's literally of, sort of the flip side of what we didn't, did in stage As you see at the bottom picture, the, the left side is done and the right side is getting ready to get done. So once the left side is done, I'd like to add on to, if you see, there's a eight inch gas main that goes and gets connected into the new bridge. That would be onto the bottom left. And also telephone ducts and cables get connected and get attached to the new bridge. Basically, they're coming off of, from the old bridge and new stuff is being installed under the new bridge. Stage three is removing the existing south side bridge superstructure and abutment. So this is what it should look like, the picture that you see below, uh, with some channel work, the new abutments, the parapets, a little rail on the parapets, and the bridge. At this point, as you see in the right side of the picture, which you, which you can't see, we'll show you in, in, on the next picture. And the left side, we'll have to reconstruct roadways about four hundred feet on both And the new bridge will look like the bottom picture. We'll have a pedestrian walkway, as you can see, it's a sidewalk on the, on the right What would we get as a final product would be a wider bridge with the improved drainage, service life and a pedestrian walkway. Show the picture of this, show it to you guys. So the footprint, as you see the dotted lines in the middle, was the footprint of the existing bridge, what we have now, and where you see, uh, kind of superimposed on top of it is, is a new bridge. Looking from the top, since the, the bridge is not done yet, so this is the plan picture, drawing off of what it, what it looked like from the top. That's a result, a brand new bridge, hopefully it'll last for another sixty to a hundred years. And we'll, we'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It is certainly helpful to understand, uh, the timeline, uh, for the projected future. Do we have questions from the council? Councilor Zandry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. So most of my questions, uh, were answered by the presentation, so thank you very much. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. So the actual construction work, you're, you're not permitted to do the work in the morning and afternoon rush, that was outlined. So are you doing more than six hours of work on the site between that nine AM and three PM? In other words, is there, is there ancillary work that's being done and it's not in the roadway? Is that what's correct?
That, that is true because the contractor, when he comes up, they have eight hour shift.
As long as they don't interfere with traffic.
Right. So in other words, they're limited to what they can do only between nine and three because of the traffic impact.
With the impact of traffic.
That is correct. At times when there were important items of work were going on, I think we kind of, uh, we allowed them to go to eight thirty sometimes, uh, with the condition that if it affects traffic, we'll pull you back in.
And the, the timeline going out till November of two thousand and eighteen, that, was that the original timeline of the entire project?
That's correct.
And, and by your best estimation right now, are we still on, on time, on target?
We don't see, we don't have any reason to believe that it'll go over that at this time.
Right. So I mean, at, you know, at this juncture, your best estimate is you're still on track, still on course.
That's correct.
Um, you brought up the contaminated soil, is, what are you finding in, is, with respect to contaminants? Are they like what you would find in normal everyday sediment, nothing?
Pretty much, nothing out of the ordinary at all.
So in other words, normal, normal things you would find in se, uh, sediment that hasn't been disturbed over long periods of time? So there's nothing to be overly concerned about, but it still has to be handled in such a way and carted away and maintained to, to a facility elsewhere, correct?
That's correct. So to, to put everybody's mind at ease, so to speak, if we had a place to put it back in, this is sort of an over excavation that we need to haul out, legally, we could take that same material, it's nothing out of the normal, we could reuse it within the same footprint if we needed to.
Yeah, it's a low level.
So it's, it's a low level.
Right.
But we have structural requirements of the soil that that soil doesn't have, it's just not functional for the...
Yeah. No, I, I can appreciate that. And you, you also made some reference to the, 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 the channel of the waterway through there. Now, were there adjustments made so that the work could be done? In other words, like, you know, I know sometimes with bridge work, you have to actually direct stronger current areas of water away from the areas you're going to work. Has, has any of that been done for this project? Re-channeling of the water flow or?
Anytime you go into a brook, uh, you would always kind of affect the natural flow of the water before you came in. Uh, in this case, the amount of water and before this happens, our hydraulics department looks at it and comes up with, with a way to design these cofferdams so we don't affect the hydraulics of the area all that much at all.
Yeah, the stream...
Obviously, in big rivers, you, you pay much more attention to, not attention is the wrong word, but, um, the bigger task is at hand. Every job that gets into the water before in-water work gets looked at from our hydraulics guys and the design of the cofferdam, so it fits the criteria.
And, and then with respect to, um, the, uh, some of the clearing that was done before the water, before the work started, now I know a lot of the area, that's, I'm trying to picture where I am now, I guess it's to the north area there, a lot of that brushway was cut and some of the trees were removed. What property was affected? Was that private property? Was that town property? Was it natural property on the brook?
I think it was all state property.
All state property.
Mostly. Uh, we did have to go in and there was some agreement for us to be able to, I think, the, there was an agreement in place between the town and Choate also.
Okay.
Uh, and the reason for that was to lay a pipe, the pipe has to be laid there. Uh, and we needed some, some of their property. So we did some temporary easements just for the sanitary sewer work.
All right. So, so the, the only work that was done off of the state property was the, the area in the, for the, for the sewer lines?
For the town.
The town, for the town sewer lines?
Water and Sewer Division work.
Okay. And that, and that was, and that was already, that was worked through with, with Choate uh, ahead of time, I take.
That was ahead of time, yeah.
Okay.
These agreements were in place, pretty much.
Okay. And, and, and so I'm, I'm guessing that only the required amounts of trees and shrubbery were removed in order to do the work. You guys didn't do any excessive cutting back? You removed what you needed removed to get the work done and, and that was about it?
That, that would be correct.
All right. And, and so some of these questions obviously are coming from people that escalated questions to me and I had an opportunity to ask. So, um, I appreciate the, the time you put together, not only for the presentation, but for being able to answer some of these questions for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Fishpine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. So I noticed on the presentation, there was a date of November twenty-one, two thousand and eight. Um, I guess I can assume that that's when it was created.
No, that has nothing to do with, that was just the slide, uh, that should have been taken out.
Okay.
I take the blame for that.
Cut and paste sort of situation. Um, so based upon that, I would expect that, um, nobody else has seen this? This was created for tonight?
For this project, yes.
Well, created for tonight? Or was this shared with like the neighborhood and that kind of?
No, this is all, this was only created for this project.
Did you at any time like meet with residents in the neighborhood that would be impacted by this project?
No, sir.
Okay. And, um, just to go back to the contaminated water and soil, am I to understand that, um, you know, the term contaminated, usually people envision radioactivity and that kind of stuff. This isn't per se contaminated, it was just soil that was, um, inappropriate for, um, the continuation of this program at that location?
That would be correct.
And it was supplanted with other soils that was more suitable?
Yeah, we bring in pervious structure backfill for all the structures.
So then, um, I got a letter March sixth, um, from a property manager of the Center Place condominium, which I believe is the condominiums, um, to the north, northwest of the project complaining about water and sub pumps and that kind of stuff. Are you guys aware of that?
Yes, uh, better fact, two residents from that complex called me and I, I spoke with I contacted the Town Water and Sewer Division. From what we can see, uh, within our department and the town, I spoke with Peter Horneck and he went out there and looked at it. It's ringing, we, we cannot see where this project affected that. Not saying it didn't, uh, we just have hard time. It's, these are not the condos on the, on the, the edge of the brook. These are the condos supposedly on the other side.
Okay. So they're, so...
The condos, obviously condos next to the brook.
Okay.
I'm assuming they're okay.
And prior to this project starting, you know, I have some experience with, um, uh, vernal pools. We did testing as to what kind of drainage there was underneath these condos. Did we do that testing?
Testing forums?
Well, because usually if we have an area that's dry and then an area that's wet and the, and the water has to get underneath, there's some condition that creates that. I would expect...
So, so very good point. Um, so, but I would assume, sir, that it would affect the condos right next to the water first before it goes on to the condos on the opposite side?
Not always, but, uh, I don't want to micromanage, but am I to understand that you're working together with the engineering department, which also...
We are.
... gave this letter to try and figure out?
On the engineering department, we are working with the, the Town's Water and Sewer Division.
Okay. But the engineering, have you been in, has the engineering department called you?
They meant, they looked at it, uh, the, the sewer, the Water and Sewer Division.
Okay. But has the engineering department, to your knowledge?
I don't know if they contacted the engineering department, but I can definitely find out.
Okay. Um, I know the mayor got the letter too, so, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We also got the letter. So just to update you on that is what we do in that process is the state of Connecticut, when it lets the contracts out, uh, makes the contractor hold us harmless so he can have, what he does, the contractor then in turn does is ensures the project. We require that he ensures the project and gets bonded. So we took that letter and we sent it to the, the contractor's insurance company and CC'd, uh, I believe Barberino is the name?
Yeah, that's, that's the property manager.
Yeah. So we CC'd them.
I know we have some of the residents here tonight that, um...
So the contractor's insurance company, normally what they do is once they receive it, they will start their own investigation.
Okay. Thank you.
Contact Mr. Barberino directly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Latrino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. The questions that I have, over time, that area was always prone to flooding and it was hard to see from where I was sitting and, and looking at your drawings, but the width underneath the bridge that the stream flows through, the nineteen fourteen bridge, I'm going to call that, the old bridge or the nineteen fourteen bridge, um, in the new bridge, how much bigger is it? Or is it the same size or?
It's, the new one is definitely bigger, but, but, but not by a lot. As you can see, the clear, the length I see from here is about thirty-two feet.
Yeah, like thirty-four feet from abutment to abutment.
Thirty-four feet from abutment to abutment.
Yeah. And it was about twenty, it was about twenty-four feet, I think. The existing was about twenty-four feet and the new is about thirty-four feet long.
Okay.
So it's, you know, the throat is twelve...
So it's a little bit bigger.
Ten feet longer, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I ask that because some of the, um, where the condos are on the, that would be the north, yeah, the northwest, the ones that were... be the north, yeah, the northwest, the ones that where basically their backyards go right to the brook, that section there. We've had a couple of big storms in the past and those basements have gotten flooded where the water has actually gone down the brook, hit the bridge and not being able to funnel through because it was too narrow and backed up into those houses. And they got anywhere from a foot and a half to two feet of water in there on one particular storm. And I was just curious with the reconstruction, you know, if it made it, if it's going to ease that a little bit, you know? We always have those hundred year storms that you'll always have a flood, but just, I was wondering what the width of that's going to be. So that's good. Was there any conversation with, I saw a lot of clearing on both sides of vegetation and a lot of soil removal up there. Was there any conversation with the town's inland wetlands? With Wallingford's inland wetland commission?
I can definitely find out for you, but if there was, I'm not aware of it, but normally we always talk with the town.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate that if you could get, you know, through the council office, if you could let me know.
I would find out and I'll get back to you.
And when that was?
Definitely.
Okay.
We typically have a tree meeting and we invite the town. That's what we typically do.
I'm trying to, I think it was trying to talk about it before the dog was being designed or?
Well, you know, typically when there's, when there's disturbance in a waterway, inland wetlands gets involved. Now, I know it's a state project, but I think, you know, just for conversation.
You have state permit, environmental permit.
You have a state environmental permit?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. But I was just wondering if the town was aware of that or, you know, what the conversation was with our inland wetlands?
Yeah, I would not know that, but I will definitely find out.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate the presentation. Very informative for us. I just wanted to ask you, and I know you're the state engineers on this project, but who is really responsible for communicating with the businesses on the next phase of the project so they're prepared and they know what's going on? We have several businesses, as you're well aware, that do a lot of business.
We do that in different ways. And a lot of times when I'm on the project site, I have spoken with businesses, which Vinnie's Deli is right there.
I know.
So I know Vinnie. I've spoken with him a couple of times. And then we have the condos.
Yeah.
And the house right next to the bridge, I think we did the take on. When we are requested, like we were now, we're always more than happy to come in and present.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the businesses and the residents living right in that general area are kept in the loop. I'm sure many of them question, you know, when's this project going to be done, those that couldn't attend tonight? And, you know, on phase two and phase three, what changes could we see that may impact us? I just think it's important that they have that information, being that they're right there, living or doing business in the center of the project.
Yeah, our field inspectors are, you know, they're every day, so they interact with people. We can make more of an effort to reach out to people before phases and traffic plans get changed.
And thank you for that, though. And for those that are not there and available on scene to ask questions of your representatives, is there some phone number or web address that they can reach to ask a question? Because, you know, everybody's not at home during the day.
We'll definitely give you our names and addresses, email address. But on occasions, the people, the concerned citizens, who, residents who live there, they have gone and got my name and telephone number from our inspectors out in the field. And I've spoken to about five or six of them, expressed their concerns.
But my, and I appreciate that, but my concern is for those that aren't at home and maybe don't realize there's access to you outside of regular business hours or to ask a question. I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Definitely, we're more than glad to provide them.
Great. Can you send some information over to the clerk so we have it to share with residents who may not be able to ask in person?
So is there somebody like the town engineer that we can give that information to or what would be the best?
Barbara, can they send it through your office? You could send it through the town clerk's office, gentlemen.
Town engineer already has our information because he was, I believe the town engineer was present in our pre-construction meeting.
Okay, so Rob Baltimore, I'm sorry, he has it?
That's right, yes.
Okay, good answer. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm all set.
Thank you. If there's no other questions from the council, we'll go out to the public. Mr. Parisi. Why don't you take the clerk's microphone since you happen to be sitting right there?
Yeah, I just want to tell you that sound system's as bad as it ever was. I wish I could have heard more of what the gentleman was saying, but anyway, I thank you and the council for, actually you for putting this item on the agenda. And I think it's nice of you gentlemen to take time out of your schedules to come down I do enjoy a small constituency, not what it was, but they're still a little group. And they've been in touch with me over this project. The general public that I talk to is not happy with it at all. It's terrible. That roadway, I hope you rode over it tonight coming down here. Did you? You have a nice new car? It's terrible.
That's, so I would agree with you. It's not up to our standards. And I'll give you a reasoning behind it. The reasoning behind it is the contractor last November was, as soon as they got ready to pave, the temperatures really came down, really low, and they had very hard time getting asphalt to pave that area effectively. What happened after that was the winter. And we have been on top of that and told them as long as the weather, as soon as the weather thaw's out, we need that repaired. We need it done right. So they're aware of it, we are aware of it.
Have you seen it today? Have you been on it this week?
Yes, yes.
And you tell me that's acceptable?
I just told you it was not. And we told our guys, contracted that.
But you're not getting the results. You're telling them, but they're not doing anything.
We have to wait for the weather.
Look, let me say this one more time, please. We have told them, but the winter weather, there was nothing that they could really do because of the winter and the snow and the plowing. So now that the weather's thawed out, we had a meeting with them last week and we told them to make plans to correct the situation and they told us they will.
They will?
Yes.
Well, I hope I live long enough to keep riding over that damn thing.
I'm sure you will.
Bill, it's ruining my car, I'll tell you that. And I don't think it's funny.
No, 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 I'm.
Very honest.
I just want you to know that we will repair that roadway.
Yeah, but by the time it gets repaired, you're going to be finished with the job.
No, sir, the job's not going to be done until the end of next year, which is 18.
I know. That's another thing. It brings up to my memory, several months ago, Marion Avenue in Suddington, two days you put a bridge over the highway. Remember that? Did you run that project?
No, we were not involved. We are from District B.
It was an innovative technique called accelerated bridge construction. And I'm told from a pretty good source that we got about the worst contractor we could get and the slowest on this project here.
It was not from our district, so I'm not familiar with.
I'm not going to, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just making my case. And you can do with it what you want. Everybody's going to forget about it in four days anyway. I'll be the only guy in my friends because we have to ride over the road. That's the main problem. The other problem that I see is there's never anybody working there full week. They work, I don't know how they work, if they got time from other jobs or what?
No, first, there are two reasons. One was snow and the snow removal, it hinders the contractors from working. So now the season is beginning and they're gearing up and they will definitely work. And then the only other times that when they, when they don't work is if, what normal public or the general area residents don't see sometimes is when we run into utility, the underground problems and we need answers and we need to resolve those. Sometimes we have to go back to the design board to redesign because we just encountered something that we never anticipated.
Well, have we done any redesign on this?
We tweaked a lot of underground utility work.
Pardon?
We, we basically tweaked, we had to make adjustments to the underground water mains work.
That water only runs part of the year. That, in your picture, was hardly, there was hardly any water.
We're talking about the town water main, water supply that goes into people's.
Oh, the water main?
Yes.
That's a pipe?
That's right.
Okay, and you had trouble with that?
Yeah.
I'm not hearing you real good, so.
Yes, we did.
You'll have to put up with me. I'm just going to tell you, the town of Wallingford had a project with, I think it was DOT, Mary, you may remember, on Christian Street. And we decided to do it ourselves. And actually, our engineering department came up with the application of culverts under the Christian Street Bridge. And they saved, I think they did it in half the projected time and saved several thousand dollars. Now, I'm, I was a businessman and I've been in this game for a long time. When I see that situation over there, I'm going to try to be nice about it, it really makes me nervous. I don't see any productivity there at all. It's terrible. And I'm concerned that with the state, with the, the way the state of Connecticut is, we better start getting every dollar we can out of what we spend. And I tell you, from my own view, my own view, I'm not an engineer, but I don't see a lot of work getting done there. There's 20 guys, it looks like four are working. If there's five, I don't know where the other three are. It just doesn't look, do you monitor jobs? Do you know what the work is on each job?
Yes, sir. So I would go back and say just one, add one thing to it, and this is, this is nothing out of the norm. If I was a general area resident or just driving through, like I said, as soon as, when the project begins, and I was involved in building of Sikorsky Bridge Project, underground work is generally not observed by the people driving by. You just don't see it. You don't see people working underneath.
How about the trained eye can see something?
I'm sorry?
A trained eye, a manager, someone who's a manager.
Yes, we have.
Well, you can tell whether they're working or not. When they're standing around drinking coffee, they're not working.
So those are the contracts. I don't know, I've never.
I'm not going to debate it with you.
Every project has its own challenges.
Pardon?
Every project has its own challenge. Just like you mentioned, the Suddington project with the ABC.
Tremendous challenge over here.
There is. There's a lot of, lot of utilities in a very, very small worksite and it's very challenging to address each piece.
Now, the house, did you buy the house there?
Yes.
Yes, the DOT.
Yes.
And it's empty?
That's correct.
Not being used at all?
That's correct.
And I understand somebody rented office space a little farther up the street toward town?
We did not rent it. Our contractor did for us.
Oh, he did. He rented it.
For us.
That comes out of his.
That comes out of the contract budget amount.
And what are you going to do with the house, may I ask?
It's not in my hands, it's with our right-of-way division. It's not in our construction, we administer construction, so our right-of-way department, I'm assuming, once the job is built, the project is finished, will sell back the house into the market.
You're going to sell the house?
That's my assumption, yeah.
I hope you're going to shore up around it.
Well, that was the reason for the take.
Well, and the other thing is five traffic lights in less than a mile? Is that's an engineering wonder?
It's a combination, I would say, between engineering and the demand from the area residents and businesses.
Well, I mean, I understand, we all want things, but sometimes someone has to tell us we can't have them. It's not for the good of the area. That street is more of a mess now with the lights than it was without them.
I think there's a visibility issue for people entering. I think there's a visibility issue for people entering the roadway from the sides, people entering from Vinnie's and people entering from the condo association.
So they don't get excited.
Yeah.
Have you gone, have you driven there?
Almost daily.
Do you?
So if you're, the reason the light is there is so that if you're pulling out on the road.
I know the lights there, Mr. Chairman, but all due respect, I know what lights are for, but I never heard of five of them in less than a mile.
Well, I don't think they were going to take down some.
You go up to Constitution Street and to.
I drive it almost daily. And I will tell you, I don't think they were going to take down other lights to put up the, the lights they had to put up for the residents surrounding the construction.
All right. I just think it's a waste of money. Anyway, I made my points. I hope my friends will be happy and I hope you can do something with the road.
We definitely will.
We'll try.
Okay.
Thanks for bearing with us. While our construction is happening, I said thank you for bearing with us. I know it's not convenient at times.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Mr. Ross?
Ray Ross, Silver Pond Apartments. I have the pleasure or displeasure of traveling that road sometimes four or five times a day. And I appreciate that maybe with the cold weather, you haven't been able to do major stuff, but you have a pothole there that opened up last Tuesday. And the pothole is growing to the point now where to avoid it, we have to swing into the other lane. And there's no excuse for that. That pothole should be filled on a daily basis if necessary. My other question is, you removed trees and brush alongside the brook for almost, from what I can see, over 200 feet north of the, the bridge. Are there plans to replace those trees and brush?
I don't know the exact locations, but there are definite plans to replace a lot of these plants and trees.
Because those trees and brush kept the bank from washing away. And you've put down plastic now, but when the plastic wears out, what's going to hold the banks of the, of the brook in place if you're not going to replace it? I would assume you would want trees and brush right back there.
There is a planting plan, yes, to replace.
So what happens is, when the job is almost, project is built, we have a landscape architect that comes out and stakes the different plants and trees.
And that's part of the, because I looked, I didn't see it mentioned up in your final condition or anything.
Right. So that was just a quick overview. I'll be more than happy to get you our planting plan.
Okay. And like I say, I appreciate that you've got busy traffic over that road, but I think you need somebody on a daily basis to throw a 50-pound bag of coal patch in that hole.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. It will be blessed tomorrow.
Any other comments from the public?
One of those people.
Ma'am, if you could wait till you get to the mic and identify yourself, your name and address for the record.
Andrea Busker, and I live at 530 Center Street.
Thank you.
I'm one of the lucky people who live in the condos. First of all, the traffic light, we can't see when we leave, so it's got to be there. I have spoken with Anil and many other people in the state and the town. And I have a major concern. I've lived there for four years. I have a sub pump that has never gone on while I'm living there. Now it does not turn off. It is constant and it's a major problem for me. And I am very concerned that I'm going to lose everything in my basement. And what happens if the sub pump fails? Who's responsible for my home? It never happened until this project started and it even started while we were in the midst of the drought. Something has been done in this project that started this problem. It was not before. Also, I am not on the actual site. I'm across the parking lot.
Yeah.
Something happened. I don't know if they opened a valve or something. It never stops.
So I believe he addressed that.
He can address it all he wants. He can address it all he wants. I wanna know it's gonna, who's on my side? Who's gonna help me?
My understanding is that there, there's been a claim that's been made, so the insurer for the contractor is inspecting that.
That's correct.
Yes, I've spoken to everyone as.
I'm assuming she received our, our letter.
Nobody has, you said that somebody was there and inspected it.
Uh, the town water and sewer division did go out.
If somebody came out, there, I have a patio set out there. They are more than happy to go to Vinnie's, get a cup of coffee, and sit there and listen. They don't have to come into my house, they just have to sit there and listen.
Believe me, the town water and sewer department did exactly that.
And what are they gonna, did they say that there's a problem? You said there wasn't.
No, what, what they told, they cannot figure it out, they, they don't know why in the world that's happening.
And I understand.
So.
Why would you continue on a project that has a major problem before you resolve this problem? I don't understand why you guys are letting them go into a phase two when they've made a disaster of phase one.
We, we're not allowing them to do this project. It's a state project, it's their, it's their road. We are, they are here to listen to us and to hear our concerns, so that, um, I, but I, we didn't have the power, and I don't know that we had the power to stop them at any point, so.
So.
So where do I turn? Do I now have to go to the state?
It's their project, so I, I would encourage you to.
Well, I did, I wrote letters to, is it, I'm new to the area, but Mr. Fazio isn't one of our state reps? I mean, I don't know where else to turn. I've never had to do this before, so I'm a novice.
Think you might be talking about Mr. Len Fazano?
Yes.
Yes, there's Senator Fazano, there's also Representative Fishbein, who's two seats to my left.
You're gonna be my new best friend, because I'm not gonna stop until somebody resolves something.
Let me.
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, you said there was indication there's an insurance company involved. Have they contacted the?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay.
No.
Have they, did you get our letter from our DOT to?
I think Natasha did.
Hi. Did you receive the letter from us?
Ma'am, if you could approach the mic and your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Natasha Zadrachny, I live at 530 Center Street as well. I've spoken to Anil, he's my original contact. Um, the insurance agent has contacted me, um, stating that the claim has been brought to CJ Fuji and to them, so they are aware that there is an, an issue. Uh, she will contact me on a monthly basis, and if I have any issues, to call her, um, in the meantime. One thing that she did say is that there is one main, water main that is off right now, and water is being diverted, so is that one of the issues that could be causing our sumps to be going off constantly? And once the main is reopened, will the water flow properly? Like, does anyone know if that's a possible problem?
It, it really doesn't pass the common sense test for me, from what I'm hearing. Uh, if the water main is diverted, it's always, see the water main, there's, unless there's something leaking in the existing water main, we would have no way of knowing, right?
Maybe, you know, what I can do, I'll get your name and address. I will check with Water Sewer. I don't think a diversion along one of our water mains would end up with water going anywhere except along some other water main. I can tell you that we have, that is the town of Wallingford, in terms of the utilities under that bridge, we have two twelve-inch water mains and ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, and thirty-inch. So that's one, two, three, four, five-inch sewer mains from four separate drainage areas that cross under the bridge. So when they were talking about all the utilities, this isn't counting, uh, you know, the, the gas main and, and, uh, the, the
Fiber.
Telephone and fiber and everything else. So it, it is complicated under there. I don't think, because they'd be rerouting water along one main, it would have, it, it would be flowing anywhere except in another main to reach its desired, um, locations. But I will check with our utility and get back to you. I just need to make sure I have your name and address.
Alrighty, alright. We've just gone from like zero sump pump usage to
Constant.
Constant. Since the bridge project started, and even during the drought.
Closer to the mic, please.
Oh, we've gone from zero usage of, of our sump pump to constant sump pump usage since the project had started, and even during the drought. And that's what brought it to my attention, when we were in the drought and there's pretty much no water in that brook, the sump is going off.
Did insur, did the insurance company from the contractor's side tell you how exactly are they, what are they gonna do, or they just, they said they're continually gonna mon, monitor it?
They're just gonna monitor and update me monthly, and I can call them if there's an issue or potential claim.
Okay.
We just don't wanna get to that point. You know, it makes more sense to correct it before a disaster happens.
I hear you.
Just because we have a name and phone number to an insurance company, that doesn't solve my problem.
Where does the sump pump push the water to, from your basement?
From mine?
Yeah.
Into the parking lot. There's a But Natasha's is different.
If you step off my patio, there's a, a drain, and you can just visually and.
If you could get closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Sorry. And once you step off my patio, there is a, a drain, and you can visually see the water and hear it.
And does it run back into the river at that point or something, or do?
We don't know, 'cause we're, we're not right along the river, it must go into the sewer system.
I just wonder if it's recycling.
I can't promise you anything more than what I could really do is talk to our, our, our Hydraulics Department, get in touch with the town engineer's office, brainstorm this thing out, uh, one more time. And I'd also ask that you stay in touch with the insurance company. And we'll get back to you with what we find out, if we do find out anything. In a positive or negative way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Uh, back to the counselor, Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, um, if the sump pump is being diverted into the, um, into the sewer system, you know, this might be a situation where they can take advantage of the program with the Water Division, which is supposed to stop that. It, it very well might be that, based upon when these properties were, were built, that that's the way it was set up, which we've heard is a problem, especially along Center Street. Um, you know, because it sounds like there's some level of recirculation of the water, if they don't know where it's going, and/or that, um, it's being diverted improperly. So, yeah, that's why I asked about the Engineering Department, 'cause the letter that I got from the property manager was sent to my Capitol Office, and the Engineering Department was CC'd on that, and that's why I had asked, you know, about the coordination. So, um, yeah, I would urge you to talk to the Engineering Department. They're aware of the diversion process and what could possibly happen here. And, um, you know, maybe that would resolve this whole situation, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
So, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to follow up on, on my question that I asked before in light of some of this conversation. So I, I know that a lot of times when work is done in, in a waterway and a raceway, that the course of the water changes. Now, whether that's from the trees being removed, or some partial diversion in order to get work done on footings, or, or, or any excavation needs to be done. But it, it's kind of concerning when you hear a resident that's been there for a number of months or a number of years, and their sump pump never turns on, and now it never shuts off. That, to me, says the water table has moved in some fashion. So, you know, it could be in part if it's actually going into an actual recovery system and it's leaching back in, but that didn't occur before this work started. So, I, I guess part of my ask is going to be that they, they take a, an, a, a closer look at this rather than a passive look. And I'm not suggesting that a certain level of, of consideration would or wouldn't be given here, but it's really concerning when you have a resident that says, listen, this thing never came on before, and now it never shuts off. That's, that's a big change for anybody, and, and we all know how water works. It's gonna find the, the area of least resistance and flow right to it. So if some pathway of the, the river, the brook's, um, travelment changed, that may be part of the problem that they're starting to experience. So, it, it is something that I would like someone to put a, a little bit of sensitivity and concern to, because it, it obviously is a change of behavior on the water in the area. So, I mean, it's definitely something that I would like to stress be looked at.
So I would wholeheartedly agree with you, what you just said at the end. There's definitely change in the water behavior. Uh, what we were having a hard time trying to understand is if the brook is like where the table is, and you have a row of condos where the first step is, they're not, none of those are being affected. If the water's going from here, the condos on the other side are being affected. So that's, usually that doesn't happen like that. So once we, we did contact the town, and we did take a walk over there. And they're both right, their sump pumps are working. And it, it is definitely concerning. So we will get one more time to the appropriate people of the town engineer's office and our hydraulic guys, and take another look at it.
All right. I, I appreciate it. I just wanna make sure that the, the level of sensitivity is, is higher than maybe norm. I mean, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, that people didn't do their job, they didn't take a look at it, but I guess what I'm asking now, in light of what I've heard, is a, a little closer eye to it. I mean, my, my own personal experience with, with a leaky shingle in the roof, which is a big, big play, different than what we're talking about here, it was on the far side of my house, but the water traveled all the way across the roof and leaked into a, an area of my house, nowhere near where I had the problem with the shingle. And, and water's funny like that. It'll travel to wherever it finds a way to go.
I agree with you. But shingle is still easier to see. The underground, when the water behavior is underground, is, is, and comparatively to what we are doing, is, is sort of definitely hard to understand, but we'll, we'll work on it further. And like I said, we will contact our appropriate people in Hydraulics and the town engineer's office and try to brainstorm this thing out one more time.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I'd like to ask the residents to come back to the microphone. I have a couple of questions for you. Just so I get my bearings of where your, your residence is. So I come off of Center Street into the parking lot. You're on the left-hand side?
Correct.
The complex on the left, okay. Um, and are you, do you live next to each other?
We're separated by one unit.
Okay. Is that unit having the same problem that you know?
They have a sump, so on our side, only three units have a sump pump. It's my unit, the unit between us, and then Andy's. Um, we're the three that have the sump pumps. And then there's two separate houses in the back. So I know our three have the issue. The units right along that brook do not have sumps, so they don't know if there's an issue. We know there's an issue 'cause we have a sump, and we know that it's now going off all the time.
Okay.
So the units that don't, they don't know there's an issue.
Okay. How many, how many units are, are on your side of the complex?
Nine.
There's nine. So three out of the nine are having?
Seven, eight, and nine.
Seven, eight, and nine.
We're the only three with sumps on that side.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Ladies, uh, can I just ask, do all of, over here, do, do all, all of the condominiums, are they all, they all have sump pumps? So ju, three. So were there problems previously at some time? Not to your knowledge?
Not to our knowledge. The builders, 'cause they were built in two thousand and seven, the builders had placed our three units with sumps, and I believe the two freestanding units behind us have sumps. We're the only, I think, five with sumps. No one else did in it, however the.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else on this, uh, gentlemen, I thank you for your time and your extreme patience um, in addressing the questions that came to you. Uh, I think the community found your presentation helpful, and I think that, uh, those residents are very hopeful that there'll be a solution to their problem and sooner than later. So, thank you again for your time.
We thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you. Onto item ten, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the report on the transition from the Wallingford Emergency Shelter to the Columbus House. Yeah, you can just have a seat up here. Hi, how is everybody? If you could just state your name, um, and your position in the Columbus House into the microphone as we go through.
Sure. I'm Alison Cunningham, and I'm the CEO of Columbus House.
Letitia Brown Gambino, Chief Program Officer of Columbus House.
Thanks.
And Matt Camerata of Twenty-Eight Maple Tree Road in Wallingford, and I'm a volunteer and board member of Columbus House.
Thank you. All right, so I wanted to invite you here, 'cause there was a lot of, um, people had approached various members of the council, and there were things on social media. I thought it would be better to just straighten everything out, and just to give everybody an update on, on what exactly, how the transition went. Um, I think it was about a year ago, or a little more than a year ago, we first discussed. Um, as a, as a polite report, the council has no control over the Columbus House, didn't have any control over the emergency shelter. Um, but it was just a kind of a, a respectful report out to let us know what was happening. And so I just wanted to give you the opportunity, um, to let us know, let the town know how it's been going, and to kind of clear up any misconceptions that, that may be out there right now.
Okay, that's a, that's a big question, and I have some notes.
I can be more specific, if you'd rather.
Well, I I'll leave it up to you. I mean, I, I got a list of questions that sent Letitia, so I can read from those.
Sure, yeah, start there.
Um, so just to, um, thank you all for bringing us here. I think it is good and important for you guys to understand uh, what we've been doing for the past almost year, since we saw you last and asked you to support the transition. Um, so as you know, the shelter is here in town, and it's actually comprised of two different programs and a couple of different buildings. We run a family shelter, which is comprised of two side-by-side units, each with two apartments in them, and then we run the emergency shelter for single adults that's on the property there, that's the old bank building on Quinnipiac. Um, the single shelter is a seasonal shelter. We open in November and will close, um, in a couple of weeks at the end of April. It has always been a seasonal shelter. We would hope that one day we can create something year-round, but right now it's seasonal. We wanna respond to the need at the greatest, um, the coldest time of year, when the risk is the greatest to our clients. The family shelter is open year-round, and so families are there, um, typically around ninety days, but if they're not able to get out by then, we work with them until they are ready to go and able to go, until we can put together the resources they need to move on. Um, just so you know, when we made this transition, the, um, the shelter was run in large part by volunteers when we took over. Um, but we have since then hired staff to provide overnight coverage for the single shelter, um, that seasonal shelter. So they are residential, we call them residential staff, and they are there in two shifts, from four to twelve, and then from twelve to eight. Um, during the day, we have a case manager on site who works with both programs. Our residential staff are seasonal, because they tend to the folks in the seasonal shelter. They are paid staff, they are trained to work with this population. Um, and our case manager goes to, I can't tell you how many trainings, um, to do the work that she does. Just so you know, we, um, keep the shelter open when it's really wicked bad weather, and so we've had a lot of what we call snow days. Um, and not just when the governor closes the state, but when we deem that it's really dangerous for people to be outside. Um, we've done that a couple of times this winter, where we've had to stay up in a couple of days to provide that coverage, and we feed people and try to keep them, you know, engaged during the days. It's tough to be inside in a small building like that with fifteen people. Um, and by the way, that program serves both single men and women. Um, one small change we made to the program was to provide a privacy screen for the women to make it a little more comfortable for them, and this year we've seen more women than we've seen in the past. And the shelter has, the single shelter has been full since we've opened. Um, so services are, um, temporary shelter and housing, food in the single shelter. Um, so services are temporary shelter and housing, food in the single shelter. We don't feed the families in the family shelter. They can provide for themselves and we help them with resources. So, we make sure they have food for their families and especially for those young kids. Um, the case management services include addressing behavioral health issues, referring people to resources in the community that they need, including food. And, um, we often refer people to Master's Mana and to other local resources. Um, we really look out for people's mental health care, their behavioral health needs, their healthcare, um, employment and income because they need both of those things in order to move out. What we've been able to offer to people, um, which is in part what we promised the previous Wallingford Board was that we would engage all of these clients in services beyond shelter, which means we can refer them to programs that offer them security deposits for their housing that often offer, um, for eligible clients, um, subsidies for rents, either short-term or long-term. Um, and certainly have worked really hard to get people on waiting lists for other housing opportunities in the area. And we've been fairly successful for that. Um, the town supports us, this, this year, we received twenty-two thousand from the town. We are very grateful for that. That supports mostly the family shelter and the case management that attends to that family shelter, which again is open year-round and our case manager is on-site year-round. Um, we do take donations. Now, here's a change in how that happens. We are very mindful of small space that we're in and we don't have a lot of storage for donations. And so, we simply ask that donors who want to give in-kind contributions like goodie bags or coats or shirts or whatever, that they call our main office, which is in New Haven. It's a phone call to our volunteer coordinator who will talk to the donor and make sure that the in-kind contributions are appropriate. Let me give you an example of when that might not be the case. If a donor wants to give, um, bags of toiletries, for instance, a toiletry bag could include Listerine. Listerine is great, except that it contains alcohol, as most mouthwashes do. So, if you look at the label, lots of us look for mouthwashes without alcohol. But for those that do have alcohol, for people who struggle with addiction, that's an inappropriate thing to hand them. So, we just, it's those little things that, we've been doing this for a long time. I have a licensed, um, clinician that's our chief program officer. She's highly aware of things like that and brings those kinds of things to our attentions. Razors are other things. People who are seriously depressed, we don't want to hand them a razor because you know where that could go. So, we just simply talk through these things with our, um, donors. Just a simple example is in the summer, if somebody's cleaning out their closet and wants to give us all their coats, we can't really provide the storage for those coats. We ask that people bring those in December and January. So, it's, it's that kind of thing. We need to be very coordinated about our donations, but we are happy to have them. The volunteers that work with us, again, when we took over, the volunteers were the mainstay. And Matt was a handy volunteer who used to stay overnights on Friday and did a tremendous amount of work for the shelter and we're lucky to have him on our board. Um, volunteers help provide meals. They come in and help cook in our very tiny little kitchen. Um, they also serve the food that we still get from Choate. Uh, Choate is a major donor of our food program and so dinners are often provided by them. We ask volunteers, we have one in particular that's just helping us manage the kitchen and the food and the food storage. We also have volunteers that are groups of people that come in and help clean up. They may do some painting, they may, um, help some cleanup, they do some landscaping in the spring. So, we often get businesses and clubs and community groups who want to come in and, and volunteer for us. In our family shelter, seventy-five percent of the clients are Wallingford residents. We reserve one unit in the family shelter for a veteran family. Um, we have a, a, a large veteran outreach program that extends from New Haven up into New Haven County, Middlesex County, and out to New London. And we've worked with Craig to reach an agreement that we would save one of those family units for veterans. But the rest are Wallingford, um, residents. Just to clear up, um, and talk a little bit about the Coordinated Access Network, which is the CAN, which I know a lot of people have questions about. I've spoken with the mayor about it a number of times. The whole state of people that provide services, all of us like Columbus House and, um, the connection and everybody is in a coordinated access network. The state is divided up into eight coordinated access networks. This just provides us with a, um, a region to support each other, to share resources. Oftentimes, we see clients moving in between shelters. We might have somebody from Middletown who comes here and then somebody from here that goes to Middletown. Those networks are important networks because they help us provide the, the vast array of services that are available for people in Connecticut to help end their homelessness. Um, it is related to the two-on-one system. And I know the mayor has often raised with me the concern that that system is a little challenging. It is, um, but they do continuously look at their data to make sure that the time between when the first person first calls and someone answers the phone, that that time is short. And they look at that data and they show us that data regularly. So, we are very aware of the wait time and the difficulties that people have in calling that system. Um, maybe I said, I don't remember, but the family shelters, our family shelter here is not part of the CAN. Um, we reached an agreement with Craig again to keep those out of that coordinated access network. Um, just because we feel like it's really important, um, that we serve our Wallingford families in that family shelter. The single program is part of the CAN. Um, one of the questions that was raised recently was about emergency entry. And because of this two-on-one system, if the, if a person shows up on our doorstep at ten o'clock at night, can they get a bed? Well, I will tell you that when we moved into this two-on-one thing, that was one of the first questions we asked too is, oh my goodness, this takes the idea of emergency out of emergency shelter and it makes it more of a, um, a waitlist kind of program. That's true to a certain extent, but we still have control over how we operate our shelters. And if we have a bed available at ten o'clock at night when somebody shows up, we're going to give them that bed. We do not like to turn people away. We'll still have the client call two-on-one so they can get into the system and so that we can add them to the count of people that we're serving. But we want to make sure that people have a place to go when they show up on our doorstep at night. Okay, I think I've run down most of the questions, but I'm happy to answer and happy to have Letitia or Matt. I also have Carl Rodenheiser, who's our facilities person, and John Brooks, our development person, who if they can answer more questions, we're happy to do that.
No, thank you. And you answered most of the questions that I had and that we had discussed when, um, we were coordinating this. Um, and, and I know some of the answers, but I'm, I'm going to ask a, a couple more. The, the population of the overnight residents is fifteen is the, is the goal or the max is what's? And that has always been the case?
Five women and ten men.
Okay. And then, uh, the two-on-one system for, for everybody that might not know is that somebody can call two-on-one and the network will arrange or coordinate a place for them to go. So, a, a homeless resident may be transported or at least directed towards, um, a certain center or shelter. Is that right?
When the individual, homeless individual calls two-on-one, they're given an assessment appointment. And that appointment will either be in Meriden or in Middletown. And from that point, they're given a, a direction to go. They can either go to the Eddie Shelter, they can go to our shelter, or they can go to Shelter Now.
Okay.
And if there's not a bed available, they will be on the waitlist. They'll be placed on the waitlist.
Great, all right, thank you. And then, um, I think that covers my questions for now. Were there any other questions from the council? Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Couple of questions that I have that came to my, um, knowledge a few, uh, not too long ago that under the old system, and, and forgive my terminology because I don't quite know what, but anyways, that the old, the old shelter before you folks came, it was known as a dry shelter. And that being that you had to be sober in order before, before you could get in, you had to be sober. And now it's not so. And could you tell me, is that true and why?
It is true. Uh, we call ourselves a wet shelter. And why we do that is that we're preparing our shelter to be in the place to get funded from the Department of Housing. In order for us to get that funding, we have to accept folks that are actively using substances. Now, at the front door, what we do do is assess for safety. If that person is exhibiting behavior that will place themselves at risk or another resident at risk, they are not allowed entry and we provide them with alternative placement or we simply call nine-one-one for detox.
Doesn't that open up a whole different set of problems though? Because somebody can behave at the door, but then get inside and you have a chaotic situation. If somebody says, another, another guest says something that, that that person doesn't like and, and, you know, they're either high on drugs or on alcohol, whatever the substance is.
I'll tell you, sir, in the last six months, we've only had to discharge one individual for coming into the shelter with an open bottle and he was not intoxicated. So, we haven't had any issues or concerns with that this season.
I, I, it, it just bothers me that that happens because I was very familiar with the, with the old system going way back. And, um, you know, people came to the shelter for whatever reason and they felt safer because they knew that who was there was sober. And it, it eliminated a lot of the problems. What I'm hearing now is some of the guests don't feel safe. The other thing is, under the old system, when you checked in in the evening, and I forgot what the check-in time was, you were not allowed to leave. You were there for the night and you left in the morning. And now I understand.
That's still the case.
Okay, that, okay, that's what I wanted to clear up because I had heard that you could go when you could leave in the middle of the night, you could leave.
No, that's not the case at all.
Okay.
We do offer smoke breaks, but outside of that, folks cannot leave. We call them fresh air breaks. If they choose to smoke, they do.
If you don't mind, just for, I'd like to talk about the safety issue because, uh, as, as the, you know, I feel like I'm the bridge from the old to the new, um, having volunteered there on a regular basis uh, from two thousand, uh, eight, nine until, uh, recently. So, what's different about today is that we have paid staff members that are there overnight that are, you know, subject matter experts in knowing how to address these types of, um, situations as opposed to a person like me that is not an expert. Um, you know, I have a full-time job at a bank and don't really understand how to, and I'll, I'll be honest with you. I've had many situations when I've been there on Friday evenings, I didn't really know how to address. Um, I've, I actually feel that the clients are in much better hands today than they ever have been.
I can agree to a point. But if somebody's coming in with substance abuse, whether it's alcohol or drugs, you know, you're, you're starting off with a problem. And that's, that's a concern.
I have to tell you, I think that's the assessment at the front door. That's why it's so critical that we triage folks when they enter. So, we know if they're at the point of not being able to behave for the night or if we're going to need to call nine-one-one because they're not standing up. We assess that at the front door and our folks are trained to do that. Our staff members are trained to do that.
Okay, it's something I'll keep an eye on, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Marone?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, can you tell me about, so I understand that the, I believe you said it's seventy-five percent full are full of town residents. So, I want to know how many town residents are in the fifteen-person, uh, day shelter?
Approximately thirty percent.
And where?
Either Meriden or Wallingford.
Thirty percent are from Meriden or Wallingford? And how frequently is that location full? It's always full?
Always full. All the shelters in our, so the, the Meriden-Wallingford shelters are in this coordinated access network and they're all full all the time.
So, I guess my only concern would be, is there Wallingford residents being turned away or is it that we don't have enough residents to fill it?
We turn away from the front door?
Uh, no, I mean, uh, so if you reach capacity, then I presume they get turned away or, or I should, by turned away, I guess I mean referred to another shelter.
They could be referred to two-on-one to another shelter. Or if we have a bed open, we'll offer them that bed.
Right.
As they enter that evening. And if we don't, if it's under severe weather called by the...
If you could speak into the microphone, please.
If we're under severe weather protocol called by the governor, what we do is offer a chair.
Okay, so, so the shelters are pretty much always full, is what I'm understanding?
They're always full.
Okay, and only thirty percent are from town?
From Mark, well, actually from Meriden and Wallingford.
Okay.
Area seventy percent are approximately from the Middletown area.
So, how do the folks from the Middletown area get here, I guess?
Through the coordinated access network.
Okay. So, that means that they're given a ride by?
Oh, you mean transferred.
I mean, transferred, how do they get here? Yeah, right, right.
By bus, by foot, they do get there. We never had a problem with an individual getting to the shelter.
Okay, thank you.
They do get there.
Counselor Xandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, everyone. So, I have a few, few questions. Um, I've gotten some escalation from residents as well. So, um, I, I, I do appreciate that you've made some clarifications on how you handle your donations and why. I, I thought that was very important that you actually outlined why. You, you can't just have people dropping off items because of storage, because of need, you know? And, and, and let's face it, there, there are some people that drive by, they know it's the shelter. They leave stuff and it ends up being trash. So, I mean, I, I, I think it's very important that that gets outlined. With respect to that, I mean, have you often had to have somebody at the door, like, turned away is probably not the right term, like somebody show up with a box of stuff and say, I'd like to leave this and then you're not able to take it? Do those kinds of exchanges happen infrequently or, or they're real rare or? What, what might be the situation where someone comes to the door with a donation or calls and says, hey, I want to donate a box of stuff?
I can tell you right now, donations at the front door are very rare, but during the holiday season, they do increase.
And so, much like the way you communicated here today, do you, are, are you able to give local donors more instruction? Otherwise, I, I know that, you know, some of the communication is, you'll call, here's the central number to call. But I mean, I guess I'm looking at it much to the way you just brought the example of Christmas time. Everybody starts feeling warm and fuzzy, they want to do something extra. Maybe to, you know, ask them, you know, here, here's a few people that we work with. I know you brought up Master's Mana. So, you know, we work with Master's Mana, we work with A, B, and C as well. You might want to try them before you, you know, go out, go out. Do you offer them other alternatives or suggestions?
We do and I'm, sorry, this is really loud. This blew up over the holidays and we all know that. It was all over, all over social media and was a real problem. Um, we took m- most of the donations that came to the door during the holidays for that very reason, that the donors, the, the local donors don't know us yet. And so, there is an education process that needs to happen. We put things, we posted things, we put things on our Facebook page, we, and our website. So, we're trying to educate donors about this change, that they understand the importance of the way we're trying to do things in a little bit, you know, different fashion. I don't know that I've put a specific example on the website or the Facebook page, but that's, you know, I'll take that, um, I'll take that back to our development guy, John in the back, who we can think about how we can do that. And also in our appeal letters, when we do send out appeals for donations, we'd be happy to put something in a letter that gives a little more explanation why, why we need to do this.
Well, I, and I would, myself personally, I, I appreciate that because I, you know, when I try to look around, like I'll look on your Facebook page or go to the website, try, try to answer the question kind of by proxy for you because I don't know anybody there either. A lot of times people say, well, I wanted to bring this, but they didn't want it. I go, maybe they didn't need it, but I, I'm sure somebody else could, let's see what we can do. But it's good to know that there might be information there for, you know, any one of us to turn to. We, we, believe it or not, the counselors get a lot of, lot of random calls, like we're supposed to know everything and we have to look it up too. So, it's really good if you guys have got pointers, even if the average Joe or Jane doesn't know to go, look, we, we might and we can go look. And as long as that's, you know, you know, on, on the About Us page or somewhere we can find it, at least we can direct them to kind of move along. Because we, myself personally, I, you know, I, I would love to see what happens around the holidays, extend, you know, before Thanksgiving and after the first year because it seems like the, the thought process goes away until it comes around again because the need is there all the time, right? And, and so, I, I like to try to foster that when I can. So, it's good if... And, and so I, I like to try to foster that when I can, so it's good if the information is there. Um, I do wanna ask a couple of questions and Counselor Marone started, started down, down my question trail with that, so. And you might know this because you volunteered before and, and I don't need any absolutes. Has the, the thirty percent Meriden, Wallingford numbers, has that been pretty much the same from before when it was just the Wallingford Emergency Shelter or has that changed? Best guess, I'm not looking for-
It hasn't changed and the only change that I've seen is the fact that it's full every night. And that's, I think, just a testament to the terrific outreach services that um, Letitia and, and the Columbus House team are doing.
All right, so it sounds to me like the normal course of what used to happen even before is we would get people from out of town, they would be there. Now, the, the folks that come, I know there's the two-on-one system, so seeing as how the, the place is always full. I mean, what norm, I mean, can you kind of walk me through what normally happened? I mean, I don't, I, do you open the door at seven o'clock and there's fifteen people there or do they just straggle in? Because I guess my mindset is, what happens if you have twenty people standing outside?
Well, we have two folks on board at four o'clock. So two staff members, we open up the door then. Um, everybody lines up in the vestibule, we call it the vestibule. They'll sit, they'll have a cup of coffee, they'll talk a little bit and one by one they'll enter. Some folks come later because they have jobs. So it pretty much staggers in quite nicely, so. It's not um, congested, people aren't feeling rushed and staff certainly aren't feeling overwhelmed.
All right, so I, I think that's important for people to know too, that it's not like there's twenty people waiting to get in and the last five are gonna get told to go elsewhere, they might be local or not.
Can I just further answer that question a little bit? When, when a client gets into any shelter in the state through the two-on-one system, once they're in a shelter, they're in a shelter. So they're gonna come back the next night and the next night and they don't have to call two-on-one but once to get that assessment, to get assigned to a shelter bed, wherever that is. So at Columbus House and the Wallingford Shelter, um, it's the same process. So those fifteen people know they have a bed that night. Now, the client may decide that they're done with us and leave and we may never see them again. And we assume that they went on to housing or back with family or whatever and we don't know what happens to them. But as soon as a bed opens, two-on-one knows that and there are people that work that system and know to assign another, the next person on the list, if there are people waiting to get, to be assigned to that bed. So the beauty of this is, if a person is on the waitlist, whenever there is a bed open in the system, that person is notified that they have a bed. Um, and meanwhile, while they wait, we know that they're able to work out something with a friend or a family member to stay on their couch until they can get into the shelter.
And I, 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 and that kind of also leads me to my next question. So I, I, I understand the concept of, you know, a waiting list, so to speak, because you gotta wait for an open bed. Now, as these things slot open, I, I don't know, you'll have to answer for me. Is there any method or process that tries to move the individual closer to where they're trying to get? And I guess the reason I'm asking this question is one way or the other, they get from Middletown to here or wherever they may be going within the system, but it may be farther away from their job. It may be farther away from their friends and then they have to get back to where they've gotta go. Because if, sometimes if people are choosing between the long haul in the morning to get to work because they really don't wanna get fired from this job, they may chance it. They may say it's only supposed to be thirty tonight and I could rough it in a doorway. And we don't wanna see people getting sick, injured or, or worse, accosted because they're out, I mean, how much effort is made to try to tailor who goes where as they're placed? Understanding that the system's not perfect.
The system is not perfect, but when the individual calls two-on-one, they have a choice to have their assessment in a specific part of the state. So they may say, um, I have family in Middletown, so they'll send them to Middletown for an appointment. Or I'm connected to Hartford, so they have a choice to go to Hartford for an assessment. So that's where that begins, being able to, to identify where you can best be served and where you want to live.
And, and with that, you know, I, I, I think one of the important things to communicate to people and, and you kind of outlined it with the, the family housing side of it, which is an all-year thing. How, and, and again, understanding that certain resources are limited into what you can do. How much effort at the open shelter, I guess is what you would call the, the open beds every night? Uh, how much effort or resource allotment is available to these folks to try to get them on their own feet? I'm a big proponent of not the handout, but the leg up, so.
Handout, yes.
So when they're in there at night, I mean, do, are there counselors or people they can talk to? Listen, you know, I'm paying a lot of bills, I don't really understand, or I make these minimum payments and I can't seem to get up from under it. Is there help for them to kind of get themselves on their own?
Absolutely, we have a full-time case manager and she works until six P M. So she's able to see folks as they enter into the shelter. And she also makes appointments with folks during the day and she'll give them bus passes so they can get there on time.
And I just wanna comment, I mean, those are the, this is the whole reason why we, you know, decided to move forward with Columbus House. I am so confident that the amount of resources available to the clients has significantly improved as a result. I see the case management and I see the success stories and it's really, it's very satisfying to me to see that we've really improved the lives of the clients that are coming through the shelter.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And it is a person-centered approach. And we offer employment assistance, um, assistance with getting rental subsidies, voucher programs. We also offer assistance with security deposits, childcare. Uh, we work very closely with many organizations in the area, so all those linkages and connections do happen.
And, and, and I really appreciate the, the, uh, the conversation and for the chairman, that my indulgence of kind of skipping around a little bit. Part of the reason why uh, I wanted to ask all these questions, that I wanted people to get an understanding that this is more than, than a bed and a meal over there. It's a lot more, but a lot of people, I really believe that's what they feel it is. It's a place for people to crash, to get a little something to eat, to get a cup of coffee and they'll be back tomorrow night. I don't think anybody wants to be there every night. I think they, they want, and I don't, and I really don't think the idea of what you guys do gets out there. And I, and I was, I'm taking a little bit of opportunity here with the item that's on the agenda to kind of communicate that in, in this kind of report out because I want people to see that it's, it's really an, an effort to do everything that can be done with the tiny amount of resources that are there, which is a lot more than what was there a couple of years ago, only because the network was self-contained before. Now it's a larger network. That it's not, it's, this is, and that was why I wanted to ask about that thirty percent, cause I was pretty sure and you confirmed it for me. The thirty percent makeup was pretty much there before. We've pretty much got the same amount of Wallingford-centric people being serviced out of there as we did before, but now we've got a lot more capability to help move them along and, and that's what I want people to see. There's, there's growing pains, there's maybe a little bit of stigma in the communication, but I want to get the message out because there's a lot more going on under the covers. So I really didn't have any more questions, you answered all my questions, but it looks like the-
I, I appreciate that and I, you've mentioned a couple of times kind of outreach and I just wanna let the council know that we also have a street outreach team that the, the headquarters are not right in Wallingford, but they serve the CAN eight. So our street outreach team actually goes to the parking lots of Walmart and stop and shop and we drop by Master's Manor to see if there are people that are homeless and we know there are, living in their cars, to see if we can help engage them, whether they ever wanna come to the shelter or not. Our role as a street outreach worker is to try to engage them in our, just services so that we can help them get out of their cars, get out of their vans, move out, out of those parking lots into appropriate housing.
And, and so that's something else that I didn't know and I bet no one else did either. So I, I really appreciate the uh, the time and you guys waited a long time that we had a, a full agenda. So I really do appreciate the information. Uh, I, I think it was important to get that, that message out and uh, uh, thank you again and, and Mr. Chairman, thank you for the indulgence.
Certainly, Counselor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanna go back, well, first of all, thank you for what you do. So, um, you know, God's work, so, you know, but moving forward from there. Um, the thirty percent situation was asked about a couple of times. Um, how many Wallingford residents utilize your services at the overnight shelter? And, and I kept, the response kept on being thirty percent Meriden, Wallingford. So what percent, because that would give, uh, fifteen, that's about four people, Meriden, Wallingford. So let me ask, how many from Wallingford?
About half of that, about fifteen percent, so it's-
Okay, so about two people?
Two people.
Okay.
Directly from Wallingford.
And how mu- how much does the, does Meriden put in their budget for your services that you give to the community?
It's the same question that I get asked by, um, oh, sorry, that we get asked everywhere we are. How much are the local, you know, the local folks contributing to your services? And the answer is zero. Um, so it's a difficult, it's a difficult situation. It's a difficult situation in every um, area where, um, except for the large centers like Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, Stanford, where it's mostly those residents. But we get people from Hampden in our New Haven shelter, we get people from West Haven, East Haven. East Haven doesn't contribute anything to us, North Haven doesn't contribute anything to us. Um, in the same way here, people are, and part of the issue, if you call Hartford tonight, there will be four or five people from Wallingford that are in a Hartford shelter. If you look in our shelter in New Haven tonight, and we could go back and do that and see if there are Wallingford residents, remember that people are transient, but it doesn't get around this issue. Um, that to support that small program, we're not getting contributions from um, the surrounding towns.
So just focusing on the Wallingford shelter, do you get contributions from any other towns?
No.
Okay. Um, you know, you say about the cities, but the, the cities get so many millions of dollars more than we do here in Wallingford.
Right, of course.
And, you know, part of the problem is that they don't share the wealth. So moving forward from there, um, the wet shelter situation. Why is that? Why did we get to that? I, I heard something about fu- funding.
Um, we, so if we didn't serve people who had addiction issues, we'd have half the people in the shelter that we have now. And I believe that was probably true before, that even though you may have said it was a dry shelter, I'm sure there were people there that had addiction issues who probably came in after having had drugs or alcohol during the day. It just happens and we know it happens. I know from my buddies that try to run out dry shelters, that unless you take, do a breathalyzer at the door, you don't know who's been ac- out there active during the day. Um, seventy-five to eighty-five percent of people who are homeless have addiction issues. So um, it's our mission to serve all those folks, wet or dry. Um, and yes, are there challenges? Of course there are. Um, but as Matt said, as Letitia says, we run a safe shelter. We have trained staff that know how to handle situations. We've not had any issues in the shelter around people that are intoxicated or high. And the one that we did, he left because we asked him to leave. Um, so will there ever be a problem? Of course, there could be a problem. There could be a problem with someone who is stone-cold sober but has anger issues. So we're prepared to deal with those kinds of problems that come up in our shelters.
So it had nothing to do with, and I, I heard something about housing subsidy or something like that, maybe I misheard, but-
Well, the, if we were ever to ask for money from the Department of Housing, um, it would be a requirement that we're a wet shelter, but we, but there's no money at the Department of Housing, so it's kind of a moot point at this point.
Okay, so presently, there's been a um, a voluntary shift to, to do that. And, and, and the reason why I bring that up is, is about four years ago, you know, Nikki Conomopoulos was the counselor, sat at the end of this row. I think it was Ken Rubin uh, was talking about. And they were so proud of the issue that they didn't accept people with these problems. That it was almost like an incentive for them and maybe it's a cold way of looking at it, that, you know, if you want our services, if you want a roof over your head, you're gonna get clean. And it's, it's difficult for me to hear the totally different argument here tonight. You know, what is the incentive? And I don't wanna be the cold person, but, you know, I bought the argument then and I don't get it now.
So when I think about the contribution that um, Mr. Conomopoulos made and his family and the Rubin family and the Elbrich family, all of that was steered mostly towards the family units. And I just really wanna stress that the family units have been a wild success, especially for Wallingford. Coordination between the shelter and the town of Wallingford and Craig Turner's office and social services has improved significantly since Columbus House has taken over. I'm not sure that we had three families housed at those family units from Wallingford when we were managing it. But today we do. And I think that we've had a lot of really good success and especially with those family units. So I, I'm not, you know, spinning the question, I just, when I think about Mr. Conomopoulos's engagement and the Rubin family engagement, it was really around those family units and that's been a real great success for us.
I totally agree, absolutely. And, you know, I'm been a member of the Wallingford Rotary Club for over ten years. I know every year we give you money for the Thanksgiving dinners and all that stuff and, you know, I'm certainly supportive. I just having difficulty hearing this just totally diverse argument here tonight, so.
So let me try to shed some light on it just from a, I guess, a philosophical perspective from where we are in the state. We, the royal, we, the, the people that either get money from the Department of Housing or don't, get money from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services or don't, get money from Housing and Urban Development or don't. I don't think there is a dry shelter in the state anymore. We all adhere to a philosophy that is hmm, five years old called Housing First, which means that we want to meet people where they are. It's very much a part of this kind of idea of person-centered practice, person-centered programming where we are going to address that person wherever he or she or the family is right then and there. And whatever those issues are, let's help you address them. So if someone comes in who's got an alcohol problem, great, because we can refer them to treatment. We can refer them to behavioral health programs that help them address their issues. We can talk about how their use of drugs influences their inability to keep their job or keep their housing. And those are really critical issues for people that are homeless and it affects a whole lot of people. By sitting down with them, when they come into the shelter, either in the night, in the evening or meet with Susan the next day, she's able to talk to them about that. We get countless numbers of people into drug treatment programs. I shouldn't say that about Wallingford, but we get people into drug treatment programs from Wallingford. We talk to them about those issues. So the point of Housing First is you get the person to a stable place, whether it's a shelter or permanent housing, you relieve the stress of their being literally homeless and on the streets and then you can start to peel back and talk with them about those issues that contributed to them becoming homeless to begin with. And that's when change starts to happen. Remember, when you're homeless, the first thing you're gonna think about is, oh my God, where am I gonna sleep tonight? Where am I gonna, where am I gonna lay my head? How am I gonna be spaced safe? Um, so if we can get them into the shelter, then we can start the real work of turning their lives around and helping them become successful. Um, so that's where, uh, that's how our thinking changed and has changed over the years to, to really address folks where they are and help them make those critical changes.
So perhaps what I'm hearing is prior to Columbus House taking over, when somebody came into the facility with a problem, there was, wasn't really the resources to deal with that problem. But today, because of where we are, it's a benefit to bring these people in because you're getting them into a, potentially into a program that ultimately will globally help them get to a better place.
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Counselor Laven?
Thank you, I, one other follow-up. We, we're talking about the family units and, and the overall cost. So says, Wallingford gives what, twenty-two thousand, how, as we said last year? Um, do you know off the, the top of your head what the overall cost of running the family units?
Just the family units?
Just the family units?
Twenty-five thousand dollars per unit.
Twenty-five thousand per unit?
Roughly.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious.
You know, factor in the utilities, the facilities, folks that manage them, the case management.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's it for now, that's it.
Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, any comments or questions from the public? Mr. Turner?
Good evening.
Good evening, Craig Turner, Ethan Social Services. First of all, uh, thanks to Councilman Laffin for putting this on the agenda, I appreciate the opportunity to have this dialogue, because there's, I think there is always kind of a cloud of uncertainty as to what actually happens with a transient population, regardless of what the population is and the services are provided. So just, I, I would make two points. Um, one way to be concerned or to resolve concern over whether there's any risk to either the public or to other residents of the shelter would be to see if the police have been called down there for any particular encounters that might have been caused by unruly individuals, whether it's substance abuse, mental health issues, or otherwise, that has been true in the past, I don't know what those numbers are now. Um, normally, I'm aware of those things when they happen, and I'm not aware of them happening, uh, to any extent at this point, and that would be one way to identify that whatever the concern is, it's being met in a responsible and safe way. Uh, the other thing, and I think it came out through the question that the Councilman Fishbein raised, what you're seeing here is a capacity change issue, in terms of how services are provided, but the scope of the services, which is really the dynamic that's in place. Uh, and I'm as skeptical as anyone, uh, I've had those conversations with several people, I sat at the canned tables and challenged many of the assumptions that they were building that program on, because I didn't think that the dynamics that they thought would occur would actually happen the way they said, and it has proven to be very challenging. Uh, but in spite of that, um, the scope of services that are now available to individuals in a comprehensive manner in one location is really a first-time event for homeless people in this state, and that changes the dynamic of treatment dramatically. They get where they need to get faster, uh, they're, they're more accurately assessed, it's more accurately determined, uh, what the pathway would be to get them to those services, the priority areas for, versus kind of a hunt-and-peck approach, which, which can be very useful. Uh, and it is very true, at least just on the local level alone, uh, the amount of cooperation and interaction, uh, has certainly increased, uh, for those of you weren't here two years ago on the council, um, I was very concerned about what was gonna happen with the family units when the transition occurred, uh, to the point of having a memory of agreement that was run through, uh, the mayor's office at the time of the, uh, social service contribution discussion, to ensure that, that conversations would take place, to ensure that the people getting in there from Wallingford had been fully vetted, and we would be a part of that vetting process, because we know a lot of those families, and we know a lot of the individuals that try to get in there that are not, would not be, uh, qualified candidates, except that they're trying to deceive the process. Uh, and that has been, uh, successful, and, uh, we're very happy that those units are largely being used, uh, by Wallingford units, Wallingford families, that was the intent, and I think that intent has been honored, uh, fully and completely to this point. Um, the other, other point that I would, uh, not a cautionary tale, but just a, a constant concern is that, that thirty percent issue in the number of, of Wallingford families, so what you're learning is that in the past, that it was not full, right? That's the difference. The biggest difference now is it is full all the time, 'cause you're getting outsiders. In the past, the numbers were not that much larger for Walling residents, it was that there were less people in there all the time. So that's the dynamic at play, um, and I think if you look at the contribution, that's certainly been outlined for this year, uh, the intent of that, at least from my perspective, that goes towards the administration and the services of the family units, that was the intent, that was the expectation, and I think that's been honored to this point. So the shelter in and of itself, uh, they're make, they're raised, my perspective is they're bringing that money into town through their own efforts, that we are not actually funding that particular program directly, other than donations made by private individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Uh, I wanna thank, take the opportunity to thank you all for your hard work and your important work, um, you know, obviously, the numbers we're hearing support the fact that there is a real need for what it is you do. So thank you for that work, and thank you for, uh, responding to Counselor Laffin's time, I mean, request to come here and give us your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Onto item eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections one dash two-two-five F and section one dash two-hundred-six B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending litigations, the Stop and Shop Supermarket Company, First Town of Wallingford, and the MetPath New England LLC, First Town of Wallingford.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going to executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session, please kindly clear the council chambers. Call the meeting back to order, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, I declare the council back in regular session, onto item twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of the Stop and Shop Supermarket Company in First Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second. Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Uh, where am I? Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Excuse me, Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa? Zandry?
No.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the next is item thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we give the Law Department auth, authority as discussed in the pending tax appeal matter of MetPath New England LLC versus the Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. There being no further business on the agenda, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.